... Callings are ordered to the nine days Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call please. Armenta, Hale, here. Hotman, Kandala, here. Kwan, here. Lozada, Sullivan, here. Please rise for legislative duty. And legislative terms.
..........................................
Do we now open up more for public comments on agenda events? Do we have any public comments this evening? Yes?
........................ Okay. You're all here despite the war. Me and my mother, I go outside and... Um, I'd like to talk about the power of authority. It happened seven seconds. Um, well, school sent a message to, um, the home through email and the phone. And the phone message. Um, I live close to you guys. And my issue was that they gave a message to my son who was dropped off on my house. He's through this. My neighbor's stolen. Then, no one needs that therapy and surgeries to grow up. But I realized that I would stay a whole day on a ten minute site. But garage door doesn't open anymore. So, I just did a solution. I was doing a system. I mean, I don't know who I should address, but I'm sure you guys are all here. So, you know, I don't need to make stick about it. Just, you know, what is the solution for, you know, not being in a town or on a ten day eight years old? You know, I don't know if I was driving, stolen, going into the house. The house was online, so I was lucky. We went in, but my neighbor's stolen, so he ran around. Of course, there's no cars and no driver, and they know we're in at home. But, you know, I mean, this is, you know, it kind of make us really nervous. My husband got the message like, you know, at, you know, like eight, you know, thirty, when the campus was restored. You know, he got the message like in the evening. I was working until nineteen forty-two, so I got, I could get the message the whole time. And I'm kind of, it made me nervous.
Sure.
So, I am just, you know, I have a question. You know, is it, can something else done that make sure that the bus actually get home? I, you know, I don't know with topic to other cars, but topic to me, it kind of scared me.
No, sure.
If I was thirty-four, you know, I don't want my child, you know, running around. Um, this is just what I can say. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not coming here to scream or something. I just want a solution and if it will happen again. Um, you know, eight years old child was in China, you know, I, this was the first time he was by himself at home. Ah, alone, we don't do that. We don't leave him by himself. You know, I mean, I didn't know Illinois law says thirteen over, right? You know, he, you know, what does an eight years old do? Christ! You know, except, you know, this was just my issue. I didn't know who I should talk to. I don't know if my husband calls somebody. Maybe, maybe you might. I don't know. Um, and I guess I don't need to stick about it. I want to give another solution. I can look at the procedure, and I do understand that the bulk of me, I should be okay, but if the school doesn't have power, I probably don't have power either because I live not far from here. Um, this is all. I don't have a teacher. I don't have the school.
No, sure, we appreciate your comment, but I think that's something we'd like to follow up with you specifically about after.
There was, there were other products where I just don't know.
No, I haven't found them. But as Mrs. Hale said, you know, we need to look into why the procedure we have set up should not allow that. So, I think we look into why.
I've done my own thing for the message.
Yeah, we certainly, I mean...
Except for campus, campus was down. I mean, the practice is not high on that.
Yeah. The procedure that's in place should prevent an executive's parent. So, that's what I need to look into is sort of like that.
All right, okay. Um, I have to go home. Thank you so much.
You know, thank you so much for coming, and I'm so sorry that happened. And I want you to know that we are working, um, on the way as a team to make sure things like that don't happen again, and that our procedures are in place for all children to be safe, and that we can communicate effectively in a timely way. So, I'm going to follow up tomorrow with Mr. Preble. We'll make sure we give you a follow-up roll call. And just so you know, because of that situation, it's the first time that it happened, and kids are being sent home early for emergency reasons. So, we've kind of created a list with our staff of kids that, um, do have to go home, but somebody's home at their regular time. But if we get dismissed early, who are those children? And what's the alternate plan for them? So, we have that list going so we can get a personal roll call if your son's on that list. So, um, please know that we put that in place too, but we will definitely follow up with you, and thank you again for coming, and I'm sorry that that happened.
Oh, okay. Thank you so very much. I'll just go home.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, then we will move on to presentations.
So, our first presentation tonight is our monthly regulation about standing staff coverage with the Diamond Award. As you can see, we have a huge entourage for, um, this Diane Wilson. So, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Fredericks, who now made her as the principal. Thank you.
Since, am I loud enough? Am I loud enough? We all know you. Thank you so much for coming out this evening to help me recognize and honor Diane Wilson. This is my first year working with Diane, and my first impressions were just nothing but positive. And I consider Diane like sunshine every day because she comes in every morning and makes staff coffee, and she tips hats. And today was Inez's birthday, and she automatically brought muffins, and she just takes such good care of the staff. My first day at Diamond Lake School, I had flowers on my desk, and as soon as they were wilted, she replaced them because she talked about everybody just needing flowers and being positive. Diane goes out of her way for our students all the time. She's identified students that require additional assistance beyond the school day, and she stays after. And she works it out with the parents just to make sure that that child gets some extra time. And I overheard another teacher say, "Well, Diane, let's pass the work day." And she said, "Well, what's another half hour, forty-five minutes? That's what the kids need." And to me, that is exactly what a person receiving a Diamond Award is about. Someone who's truly there for our students, for our staff, for our entire community. Diane helps us out on recess duty, even though at this point we're okay. She still goes out there, and it is so amazing to see her exercising and getting the kids moving and doing different things. Today, she sat up in the gym. Um, we tried something new to let, because we had indoor recess, and we let our kindergartners go into the small gym. So, she, and actually Melissa as well, thank you, set up relay races and stations, and these are things we just do in a moment's notice just to make sure our kids get something good. So, um, it is with true sincerity that I welcome Diane to come up here and receive her Diamond Award, and I thank you so much for your dedication to our students, our staff, and our community.
Thank you so much. A great group of people to work with. Julianne's been wonderful, and I have great staff in Judy and Holly, Joanne and Melissa, and many of us have stayed for family reading night. And we didn't expect more than fifteen people for January fifteenth, and we had sixty, plus sixty. So, a lot of great things happening, but great people to work with, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're all right. One night only.
See you in the future.
I know.
This is Lucia.
Come on. She's ready. She's making it. Thank you so much for all you students and staff.
And thank you to the family and the Wilson family for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our second presentation of this evening is Dr. Raff summarizing the WINS, the fall winter star assessment data.
I have an outro.
So, I'm going to hand over the floor. Corbin, Steve?
Yes, so several months back after, I believe I had presented on the fall data, I was asked to give a brief presentation related to the STAR data. So, this was the first STAR window that went from fall to winter. Typically, winter data is reserved for those students that are involved in the RTI process. But in our district, because we're so small, we tend to assess everyone. It's a twelve-week window typically because of our late start. You probably have somewhere between like sixteen to eighteen weeks, sort of the middle of the year. So, we're just before the middle of the year. So, what I have in the presentation is just sort of a few data points that are somewhat unique to the STAR assessment. But I wouldn't necessarily say that based on the time of year that they're necessarily completely reliable because of the fact that we haven't completed a first, speaking of first half of the year or even the entire year. So, um, I'll share with you the first slide, which is related to percentage of students meeting state benchmarks according to STAR. So, one of the unique things about STAR is it marries to the Common Core standards for Illinois and kind of gives you an indication as to where our kids might be or where they're projected to be at the end of the school year as it relates to PARC, or I should say, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, not PARC. So, gives you an indication that at this point, and this is roughly similar to our IAR data, and that we have about twenty-five to thirty percent of our kids, with the exception of the, um, the fifth grade math benchmark, which seems to be a little bit of an anomaly there. It's a little bit off kilter. About twenty-five to thirty percent of our kids are meeting state benchmarks, which is pretty typical of what we saw in the IAR data. The third slide relates to average scale scores compared to national scores. So, one of the things that STAR offers us is sort of a grade level equivalent. The grade level equivalent does not mean that our, that our eighth grade students are all performing at sophomore, middle-of-the-year grade level. What it does is it takes a look at the average scores for our eighth graders and compares that to everybody nationally and the score that our eighth graders have. It's typical of that of a tenth grader. What I will say to you about that is that while we have many kids that perform very, very high, our averages are askew. We have small sample sizes, which, which creates some, um, some implications for data such as this, like reliability and validity in terms of where our kids are at. So, when you're comparing our kids to other kids, what you do have sometimes is sort of that, that normative data that is just slightly variant. Generally speaking, this is showing that our third grade students are in math at about a third grade level. Our fifth grade students in math are at a, at a fifth grade level. Our eighth grade students in math are at a sophomore, middle-of-the-year level, which I'm, you know, just sharing with you based on data slightly off kilter. So, in the previous slide, you saw that our fifth grade math students were low, but then here you're seeing that our eighth grade is relatively high. The next slide is a bit more true in terms of the data that it shares because it's simply relating to grade level percentages. So, this is our average students, not in comparison to others, but in comparison to grade level reading levels is, um, based on our, our winter data is that our third graders are roughly around a third grade level. Our fifth graders are about a fourth grade, middle-of-the-year level. Our eighth graders, according to this, were at a sixth grade, six-month level. Uh, so, again, average scores, that doesn't mean all of our eighth grade kids are at a sixth grade, six-month level. What it means is that we probably have students that are relatively high, and we have some students that are relatively low. Then the last slide I, I shared with you is the student growth percentile. This is something that we've been taking a look at now. Well, this year for the IAR was the first year we looked or had an opportunity to look at student growth percentile. And so, uh, what you're seeing is very typical here of what we saw in the, uh, the IAR. Our students are roughly performing between the fifty-first and like the fifty-seventh, um, student growth percentile, meaning that our students are growing faster than fifty percent of the population of students that takes this test, which is nationally normed and referenced. The last slide I put together because I just wanted to give, you know, some general, some general feedback based on this assessment was that while you recognize that the data is inconsistent, this is only a short window of time between the beginning of the school year and the middle of December. It was just a short twelve-week window of assessment, which is not typical. But the data does show that we have some student growth percentiles that were similar to that of the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. Uh, the student state benchmark attainment is loosely consistent with that of our Illinois Assessment of Readiness. But the winter data reflects approximately twelve weeks of instruction, which is atypical. It's not typical to have just a twelve-week window. You typically have about a sixteen-week window. And then, just for the purposes of information sharing, um, the STAR assessment allows us to take a look at student growth percentiles, instructional reading levels, nationally normed percentile rate. So, if you got your student's report, you'll see that, you know, your child has a, has a percentile rate in comparison to others within the nation. Um, it gives you some grade level equivalents, which compares your child's scores to typical scores in other grade levels, and it gives some other pretty unique and detailed information from, uh, from a useful perspective from the school standpoint. So, we utilize STAR data in terms of our RTI programs. We use our STAR data to impact instruction, how we're going to focus on our curriculum, what we're, you know, what our goals and objectives are in the world of a curriculum, and then also for our RTI plan as well. So, any questions?
The RTI.
So, response intervention is sort of just like common lingo that relates to when kids aren't performing at grade level, what, how do we respond? So, what is our response when they're not performing at grade level? We use RTI as sort of a trademark program, but, um, it just gives us sort of some triggers. If kids aren't performing at grade level based on assessments like the E's or F and P, or other assessments that we use, then what are the interventions that we, how do we, how do we respond with intervention to make sure that kid's getting additional minutes of instruction in his or her area of depth?
So, Steve, I know you kind of gave the disclaimer that because of sample size, there's some anomalies in the data, but I'm...
Sure.
So, the second slide, if the fifth grade state app benchmark is like ten...
Just like eleven percent.
Eleven percent meeting.
Yes.
I think meeting or exceeding state benchmarks.
Mm-hmm.
And then the following slide.
Okay.
Says that our fifth graders are performing at grade level. How is that possible if one piece of data shows that only ten percent of the meeting standard, on average, the grade is performing at?
This is a fun question. I'm going to go ahead and attempt to answer. All right, so the first one, right, this, this question or this graph is asking you to measure a student's, um, scale, or excuse me, measure a student's score based on a criteria. That criteria is the Common Core State Standards in Illinois, right? So, it's saying, "I'm measuring your students' work against this rubric, this set of standards," which is, so that would be a criterion reference piece of data. The next slide is comparing our student's scores, not to a rubric of standards. It's comparing our student's scores to other kids' scores. And so, there's, you know, basically STAR offers two kind of unique things. Norm-based, um, references and criteria-based references. So, things that are, are based on a scale like PARC or the Common Core State Standards are things that are criterion reference. And then norm-based is, "I'm comparing you against other people." And so, those are the two big distinct distinctions between the types of data. So, what this means for eighth grade is, let's just say for, for simplicity, say, eighth grade students average a scale score of a thousand. I don't know if that's necessarily the number, but let's just say it is. Well, that notion is that if our average scale score is a thousand, well, the average score for tenth graders in this country is a thousand. So, our eighth graders, on average, are performing at a tenth grade level based on a thousand being an average score for a tenth grader. Going back to this one, there's no such comparison in terms of numbers. This one is comparing our scores based on the Common Core State Standards or the PARC slash IAR standards. So, they use that as their measuring stick, which is something to be thought about because, um, whoops, wrong way. Grade level equivalents are things that we'll, we will look at often. And so, you'll say, "All right, in the state of Illinois, I think the percentage was something like thirty-six or thirty-seven percent of our kids meet the state standard," meaning the artificial standards that we set by PARC and by IAR. Only thirty-two percent of our kids in Illinois meet it. That doesn't necessarily mean that our kids aren't outperforming kids in other states when you compare their scores to other people. So, I, I hope that made a little bit of sense.
The third, the, the third slide is, um...
This one...
Relating, it's relative, where the other one is compared against.
Yeah.
An absolute standard.
You got it? Yes, that's exactly right. Comparing it against a, and sort of an artificial measuring stick set by the Illinois State Standards. The other one is comparing my kids.
I'm just confused, but...
Yeah.
How, didn't seem to drive, but it's different pieces of data.
Yeah, it's the difference between norm-referenced and criterion-referenced data. Those are the two, this, things that distinguish those two elements. And that's, um, you know, that, that exists in other areas throughout this data as well. So, I hope that was as much fun for you as it, as it was for me, as I promised.
Thank you for the explanation.
Steve, um, when we're looking at the second slide, the benchmarks, state benchmarks.
Yep.
Are those benchmarks, um, numbers that the state has determined the grades should know by the end of the year for this time of the school year?
Yeah, by the end of the year. So, I think there's a, there's a little bit of that that's askew. These are benchmarks based on third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. And so, a lot of times what you'll see too is, um, you know, my child's in fourth grade, but they don't know all the fourth grade standards. The, the word that should, that should end with is yet. By the end of the year, you should essentially have mastered the fourth grade standards as a benchmark.
So, looking at the data of growth from fall to winter, and if our students are on a harve from winter to spring, where do you see this data? What do you see it looking like?
What's the projection?
Right.
I'm imagining, um, I'm imagining our, our attainment as it relates to IAR will probably mean remain pretty similar to what it has been over the last couple of years in that we will end up in around that range of twenty-eight to thirty percent. But, um, my hope is that our growth continues, especially for IAR. Again, this is just sort of a diagnostic tool that we use throughout the year. My hope is that at the end of last school year, our student growth percentiles were fifty-three percent in both ELA and math. It would be my hope, and with looking at this data, that we would hopefully exceed that fifty-three percent. I mean, that's what we want, to see our continued, our students to continue to grow at higher rates. And especially for those of us, those of our students that are performing below grade level, if we ever expect them to get to grade level proficiency, we have, we have to see them above the fiftieth percentile. Some of the challenges there, and obviously, we, we face a large number of our students, especially in grades K through five, who come from English language learning backgrounds. So, that's a challenge for students that are navigating the world of school and also learning another language and may not have the same language supports that many of us in this room are able to offer our children in terms of vocabulary, background knowledge, and so on and so forth. And obviously, we talked about, you know, the high levels of poverty and the impact that we have there, and then also, you know, we have a dual-language program, which impacts many of our students, especially in the early years. From an academic standpoint, I am in love with the dual-language program for what it does for the hearts and minds and connectedness of our children, but it doesn't necessarily equate to higher test scores, and the research will show you that. You know, so those are some of the things that work and are a challenge for us. But I, I anticipate that with our programs and with our, our focus on RTI this year, and I would, I would hope to see that our student growth percentiles improve.
So, this, three times a year?
Yeah, we do it three times a year.
So, the screen test is at what point in the spring?
Um, the, the final assessment will be in May. We were just actually talking about that this evening. The last, so, the fun and exciting thing that we get to do to children that are in the American education system is we start testing them in January for AXEL testing, and we follow up in March with the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. And then we come back and we provide them with another assessment, which is the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, and then we just polish them off with the STAR assessment.
Is there one there, Mr. T?
Yep. In a hundred and seventy-four days. In a hundred and seventy-four days with, I think, ten of twelve of those removed, four for, uh... So, like you were asking me at the last, at the last board meeting, we just need to extend the school year. So... Any other questions? Absolutely. My pleasure.
Okay, rule now, we have to move to our agenda. Three items for action this evening. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have separate vote on the item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be resolved that Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A3E is listed. Please note for item A, the date should be twelve seventeen twenty nineteen for both of those meeting minutes. So, that will be corrected on the final copy. May I have a motion to approve it?
So... Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hotman?
Yes.
Lozada? Lozada? Uh, moving on to the School Maintenance Project Grant. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education approves the recommendation to apply for School Maintenance Project Grants and make available local funds to meet the local funds' match requirement.
We need to, we need correction.
Yeah. Uh, we, we have a couple words that are added.
Just, it's just repeated?
Yeah. Okay, so we will have that corrected. Um, can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Kwan?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hale?
Yes.
Hartman? Lozada? Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, and then moving on to personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items to fit on the agenda. We have one new hire, and we have one in town, and now it's gonna retire him. May I have a motion to approve? Second. Sullivan?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hale?
Yes.
Hartman?
Candela?
Yes.
Lozada? Okay, that concludes our maintenance agenda. Moving on to forward discussion.
Okay, so we have, um, a few items that we just wanted to bring to your attention and give the board an opportunity to ask any questions. And the first one, it was, um, brought to my attention by a few board members that because of our extension of the school year to June eleventh being our last date, that may impact, um, eighth graders who wanted to take summer school with the World History class either at Stevenson High School. So, um, Mr. Wolfherd and Mr. Cunningham have followed up with both high schools. And, um, there doesn't seem to be as much of a concern for Mundaline High School because it's more of a, kind of a catch-up intervention model as opposed to maybe an extension or getting ahead model as it is for Stevenson High School. So, I know that, um, I'm afraid I enjoyed last night. It's not coming to me.
Gobble?
Mr. Gobble attended last week, um, for the orientation for Stevenson freshman, incoming Stevenson freshman, and he addressed that. So, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, and I know that there's, um, a model that you have drafted in there for the board's review as far as what are the conflicts of dates and then possible, um, options. Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Wolfherd?
Well, um, as Dr. Sharnell Lewis said, uh, we put together the key information for, for the parents who came. Uh, we didn't have the largest of turnout, we usually don't have a large turnout. A lot of our parents, if they have siblings, or if the children have siblings, they just kind of go with the flow. But, we will take this information after the board meeting and make sure this goes home to all of the kids at Stevenson. Just for the parents at that FYI. Um, you can see that Stevenson's summer school begins June second and has two sessions. They're laid out there, and those are not Packer colors, by the way. Those are Patriot colors. But, uh, it was too funny to do. Mr. Gobble, and we've talked, and Peter and I and Troy have had joint conversations about this challenge. Uh, the fact is that we are in school, we don't graduate until June tenth. And the summer school for Stevenson begins June second. And if students were to attend summer school at campus at Stevenson, their parents would wanna have to pull the children out, you know, ninety-seven days before the end of our school year, that's still a lot of time. Uh, on the other side, if we were to split the day, it's a lot of time lost. We're very much challenged right now, and how do we address this? And, we've been kicking around some different ideas, and really, Stevenson's gonna have to drive how they do their summer school program. But, Mr. Gobble made clear that about only a third of the children who attends Stevenson go to summer school. But, he said about three hundred semi-kids.
I think the statistic we got of, as freshman parents this past year was that eighty percent of the freshman class attended summer school last year?
I think, well, he said thirty percent, but then, only thirty percent-
But is that thirty percent of the whole world history?
Of the summer school, majority of his world history. Unless, if you're correct me if I'm wrong, unless I misinterpreted that.
He said about a third did?
Yes.
A third of freshmen, or a third of the student population?
A third of the population.
Okay, 'cause I think the figure I had was eighty percent of fresh, incoming freshmen attended summer school.
I can clarify that, I may have misunderstood.
No, I'm just saying that that's like a, that's a very large figure.
It is, they, they, um, have it set up, and unfortunately, it's kind of a urban lure, folklore, that they have to take it. You don't. Even Mr. Gobble said his daughter-in-law will be taking, uh, summer school because he wants her to not push like that and relax and be with the family. But, the children can enroll in between freshman and sophomore year to take World History as well. We are kicking around ideas, can we do a couple Saturdays? Can we have a small cohort group of Westville kids for the first seven days? We're still working on, trying to figure out ways to address this. But, it is an optional component of schooling. We don't have one fail-safe solution. But, you know, Stevenson has, uh, been looking at and listening to our suggestions, and we're waiting for them to give us some other feedback that may be something else. Is it e-learning? Is it weekends, like I said? Is it after-school here? Do we bus kids over for part of the day? What can we come up with? It is a challenge, but it is, it is a-
How many eighth graders?
We have twenty children slated for Stevenson. Nineteen, uh, as I understand it, will go, and one is moving interstate. So, and then, out of that, uh, total of about ten kids would want to take the World History class.
And that, that aviation class is involved first and second session?
Yes. World History is a, what they do is they take the whole year and condense it to the summer. And so, basically, a day is like a week of study. So, you have five straight hours, it really compacts that. Children can take the sessions, but they would have to take the second session, which starts June twenty-ninth, if it was a class that's not World History.
Are, are there other classes, though, that, that would be both semesters? Like, if they took a math class or a science class, too? I know World History is the most popular by far, but I know that they all also offer, like, math and science and other classes that would be like a year-long class.
Well, that never came up, so I can't confirm it. Alls I know is you can research and look at more of that. Our conversation with our Westville schools-
Yes.
Is World History.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, like, based on the way that this, um, paper is worded, it's okay solely on World History. And I just wanted to make sure the kid who is gonna maybe take, I don't know, a math class, and they could get ahead, that, that would be, it would get the same treatment.
It seems to me that the focus of every discussion, when Peter jumped in, when we asked the kids, it was World History. So, that's what drove this. But, so this is, this is where we are with this right now. Um, we, we know the dates, we know the session, we're trying to come up with a creative solution, being flexible. We wanna respect their time, but we need to respect our instructional time as well. Uh, it's a one-time deal because of the late start and the overlap with, uh, the opening of the school. So, we're just gonna continue to work with Mr. Gobble and the high school, and, uh, Dr. Sharnell Lewis, keep her informed, and then we'll keep you informed.
Their, their project analysis published in terms of what's both semesters? As I'm looking, almost all, I haven't found one yet, several ones, you just were, Mark, Mark was it?
Yeah, I think some kids would have the math. I know a couple kids that took the math. I'm just using that as an example to say, if all of our stuff is focused on World History and kids is, wait a second, I wanted to take geometry. Like, that, that we'd give that, we'd give a semester, you know, class the same treatment.
It tends to give them a study hall period.
Well, or electives, like my own child's of World History last year.
Especially if you wanna be bad or required.
Well, if foreign language is an elective at Stevenson, so then it gives them opportunity to do some more kind of fun classes.
Absolutely, it, it does. Um, Mundaline High School's summer school begins, um, um, the, the week we graduate. And so, it's June month. And so, that tends to be more of, what, I was looking at the term, incredibly crowded. I haven't even given one of the freshman classes, it didn't really look like it online. And then, Peter ran into that, but, uh, I got to leave it, but, uh, just right before the beginning, and it tends to be more about, you know, the older sophomores, juniors, seniors.
If the freshman unlikability would help that, so, uh, summer, you see, uh, the freshman unlikability to get that out of the way, and, um, the rest, there's a lot of the likeness for freshmen. The health class would be the only-
It might be, uh-
But, that would be a semester class.
Right, and speaking with Dr. Crowe, we wouldn't be able to work something out for the two days that it would be back across over. So, we know that, we're trying to be very creative with both schools and try to come up with a solution that can win so that the children don't feel lost or left out, and that we can give parents some clarity that, um, you know, I can't, Peter and I can't create a session for Stevenson unless Stevenson's willing. We've offered a satellite at our school after school. We, so we're trying to come up with this, e-learn is both things I said. And, and, and it's just, it's a bad coincidence issue for it.
What is the concern they would miss in those last six days here? Like, do you, I mean, is that curriculum planned out so you'd know they would miss tests? Or, you know what I'm saying?
There's wrapping up the school year projects, final grades, et cetera, that they would be doing. I mean, like, I mean, we know that you kind of taper down at the end, yeah, but not for nine, seven days or whatever it is.
Sure.
Um, there's presentations and final reports and projects and closure. There's also, you know, I think we need to look at respectfully, why is our instructional time any less important than theirs? And I, I say that respectfully.
Sure.
Um, I think that summer school, this may not be popular, summer school's an option. It's not a mandated, uh, requirement. It's, it's an option, and, you know, I think that with it being an option, we have options then to try and weather it. Uh, more so than if it's a requirement, then we would really be in jail. But, I, I'm not, I may not be articulating it as well as I'd like to.
Sure.
But, I, I appreciate it. I would like to, I would like to respectfully also look at the fact that twenty percent of the population is going to one school, and if we say it's okay for that, twenty percent to miss school, what about the other eighty percent? If, you know, for seven days, that's a challenge of the, in the-
Yeah, I think, seeing missing school, though, is kind of stretching it.
Well, I have it tonight.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if you know that they're attending another program, it's not like they're just at home hanging out.
Well, I, if they choose, if they choose to go to, um, World History, but if they also choose one, so, I don't know. I've just been saying, and I don't wanna get into like a negativity here with this. I just am concerned that the, it takes away from any of our crews as a, right? You know, I think, I think there's some of that to look at. But, I think with that time, Mr. Gobble said that they can create a session, a section if parents want to go there. Because a lot, I know they open their door soon to register, and people wanna get in. If they have to, they'll just get another teacher and create a section there themselves. I'm just trying to ask if we can get a session where it's, towards, like, a week with the Westville kids or something like that. That's what Peter, I don't, Peter, he might add, um...
I, I think it's just, uh, we're hoping for more collaboration. So, it's bound to, I think, more of those things in high school for the next few weeks. We're hoping to see that, maybe, from all the good solutions right now. Amongst where short for example, that satisfies all parties. It's not for lack of trying or ideas, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Sure.
I think we, we were disappointed if you thought we would be getting there.
I mean, was it eleven, right? Eleven out of twenty?
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm sure that if you check, they wanted to be four.
If you have eleven, twelve, that one, you know, it's summer school, so, hundred and seven, that's another reason.
Yeah.
Well, I wanna thank both of you for your continued efforts in communicating with them. I know that you were trying hard, so we'll just continue to work on that and hopefully, like you said, come up with a clever solution. That'll be helpful.
Yeah, try to find something more creative and, and-
We've talked about doing something online, you know, maybe having like a satellite or doing it online for them, so they can take here, or do it after, earlier.
The hard part is the background is so compact. One day is a week, and it's five, you know, it, it really is a, a strong compromise. And we want our children to be there, but it's, it's a challenge, it's just a challenge.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for more practice? Thank you, Mr. Wolfherd, Mr. Cunningham. And then, our second item is, um, the special ed, um, audit follow-up. Um, as you know, we have that special ed audit done in the months of November and early December. And, um, in our last board report, we have the full report as well as an executive summary. So, from that, um, there was areas of needs and recommendation that Dr. Collins suggested that we need to follow up professional development with, um, one of her staff with goal writing and IP review. Um, so you can see those, um, three times are indicated and scheduled for the early part of February. And then, um, she's gonna come back and work with, um, principals, um, in her, uh, leadership in their building, um, and just making sure that they're monitoring, um, the special ed process and the IP process, and communicating with staff in the right way and staying compliant with all procedures. And so, that'll be in the middle of February. And then, she'll come back because one of the, uh, idea, uh, needs, areas of needs is also students with behavior needs. And so, during the institute day of March twentieth, she'll be working with special ed staff to kind of come up with a schedule for her to, specifically with the K two team, R five team, and six eight team, because it's like both according as far as the ages of the students. And then, she's gonna come back, um, in early April and just kind of tie everything up. And so, talk with special ed team leaders, uh, things that they need to be doing to better communicate, um, with not only their colleagues, but also with their building-level principal. And then, um, Dr. Radka, Dr. Frederick, and I are gonna be in her, looking at specific programs, that are enhanced, what we're already doing for our special ed students in regards to differentiation. So, whether we are gonna look at some, you know, specific key programs in regards to, uh, to main duties of our special ed, um, students or students who have an IP. So, that's kind of just our follow-up. And then, from there, um, towards the end of April, we'll see, um, if we should continue the long-term partnership with Dr. Cowell, just kind of supporting, um, having her support us and the special ed process, whether it's indicating to staff, making sure that they have the appropriate professional development, making sure that principals have what they need as far as, you know, legal updates. But, I also think that we're gonna do a better job going forward of just having our attorney meet with us on a regular basis, um, and do the same thing. Maybe principals meet with staff, making sure that we're up to speed and current with all of the special ed laws and changes that come about. So, that's a little bit of our schedule. I just wanted to thank you for where that existed area of continuing to be in focus. And if you have any questions, or if you're anything specific, either about the report or about our, the model that I summarized for you. Thank you. And then, the, um, third item is, um, Mr. Rogers and Dr. Frederick's attended this CEDOL joint, I believe, meeting, um, I believe, uh, earlier, just last week. And, um, there's been some updates that, um, which, um, in January for two. And so, if, Dr. Frederick, sorry, I'm so there's. Dr. Frederick, if you wanna just give a quick update, um, on what the changes are and then the requirements for, um, a board member to attend the governing board meeting in June?
Right, of course, um, uh, last year, I think we talked a little bit about some changes to school funding in the state of Illinois. And that impacted- And that impacted some changes with the way our joint agreement is set up with SEDOL. In the past, all school districts write an idea grant, and that's the primary funding for special education programs. When SFP went and directed that instead of the funding for special ed going to cooperative, it go directly to the school district. And the reason that is important is in the past, the special education funding went directly to cooperative, they kept 43% of the funding for our district, for all districts, and then gave the rest of the money to the districts to spend on special education. So, that 43% was saved by cooperative for some tuition-based programs, but we also paid tuition-based programs back to the cooperative, and it also paid for audiology and infinita. So, the state now determines that the school districts have to get the funding directly, so we will receive 100% of our funds back. And because of that, now they would reiterate their financing structure to, we will have to pay them for audiology and infinita, but it's more on a senior service basis. So, overall, the changes are positive. I spoke with Barbara Watson today just to make sure, and she's the superintendent for finances at SEDOL. And she seemed to be very positive about the changes, that this was very, you know, it made sense to her that we get the money first, because it was also going to address districts who were concerned that that, the money that SEDOL was holding was really going to other districts. Were a smaller district, are we, are we funding districts that, we don't realize it. So, it does make more sense, I don't know if we have to watch through all of the changes or if we want to take a look at them, and it's not, no, any questions that we have. I know we've kept it basically, part of the board agenda today, and everything is crossed out, but I, I basically gave you the highlights, but the superintendent, Mrs. Donen, did really want to stress how important it is for someone to attend the March 4th board meeting, because that's where they will, they will take action on passing the joint policy, and we need to have a forum now. Do you have any other specific questions right now? Like I said, I kept you on through it, but I gave you the highlights. After, really, the biggest change is our page five of 14, and that's basically what I just spoke with you about, our page six, the housing credit change actually was approved last year, but it goes into effect next year because we pay, and you're, and you're right. Page seven is based on half the enrollment and half of the services used last year, so it's just a little bit more funding, so, but the highlight is really that, that biggest tier of the physical.
So, I'll send something out just to make sure that, what if we can be able to let that number be in March 40?
It is March 4th, it's definitely out, and it pages like school.
Okay.
I do not think it's out, but they asked that we definitely share this with our boards now, so that somebody is prepared to, either for that, and if that was clear, we would stop doing it. I know our board members or any board members have questions, call them directly, they certainly want everybody to be prepared before the vote takes place.
Okay, we'll add this onto the next board meeting. Meeting is just a reminder, we're pushing, our board members. Those are all the items we have for discussion.
It looks like we had one voyeur class that was failed, and then moving on to notices and contributions.
So, a lot of those are just more on free information, just things that we received. What about E-rate? A thank you letter from our new president regarding our holiday breakfast, the next Lake Division meeting, which is on March 11th, and then I think for some of you former, for the newer board members, Mr. and Mrs. Longstra, our longstanding donors, private donors that need to be every, or on the holiday time, and just donate something that they just want to benefit all students, and they just give pride and pleasure from that. So, just wanted to share that letter with you, this year, their monetary donation, and we're going to discuss that district leadership, and how we use that. Last year, we used that money for the sensory walk that's at Diamond Lake School right now, and they're a small town, so we use that money for that. And we use the money to support the special ed level and extend resources for students.
Great. Moving on to public comments, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, moving on to others.
I just wanted to share with you, since I know you brought to my attention at the last board meeting, current knowledge that we have for 20, for 2020, 2021, our spring break is a week later than what currently the two high schools have, and also some of the other schools in Lake County. So, we've updated that, and we're, shared it with the professional advisory council. They have, we just kind of review that with our teams, and then we'll bring it to your attention for action to make those changes on the February 4th meeting review, and then action on February 18th meeting. So, we'll adjust it so we can be aligned with our board members.
Right, so this reflects the.
Yes, so it's being under, it's under the staff and leadership review right now, and then we'll bring it back to you if there's any feedback. I don't think there will be, I think people will appreciate that, since a lot of our staff have families, you know, that have, have youth students or, you know, that go to those schools, so I think they'll appreciate that.
What does that do to the end of the year because on our, good Friday, that's an equivalent, this spring break?
To go an extra, an additional day on Monday. So, the way this stands right now is we just basically shifted it one week, and if you can see, we still have Good Friday, which is Friday, April 2nd as a non-attendance day. And then what we did was add or continue to keep Monday, April 5th as a student non-attendance day, and it just changes our end of the school year to the 28th. If staff, if we get feedback that they'd rather keep it at the 27th, then we just will remove that Monday, the 5th as a student non-attendance day. And one of the other things that we came up with, our, you know, what we suggested is, if there are emergency days that are needed due to weather or, you know, some other emergency, that, that Monday, April 5th would be day one of the emergency.
That's good.
And then we would go to like June 1st, June 2nd, June 3rd, June 4th.
That's what I do a lot of, for district's room.
So, as it stands on this updated calendar, that Monday during the 5th is a non-attendance day for students only, or for staff?
For both.
For both.
And so, we moved the last day of school, it was, like, the way it currently stands right now, the last day of school is Thursday, May 27th. By keeping Monday, April 5th as a non-attendance day for students and staff, it just moves the last day of school to 28. But if there's an emergency day needed, then we would just use Monday, April 5th as day one, and we would have, and we would communicate that out so families and staff would know.
So, would be built in, make up day?
Right.
What do we expect first day of school to be August 21st?
Probably, we should do that first full third week, so, I don't have the 21 calendar in front of me, but.
So, you guys August?
Back to the 17th, yeah, similar to that. We're back on schedule now, this was the only year that we also, that we adjusted it. So, if there's any feedback from staff, I'll definitely share that with you right now, this is the calendar that you would take action on, on February 4th. Would you be ready to take action on February 4th? I don't think we need to wait until the 18th, do you, since we have a copy of it?
No, I'd rather do it now, because I think people will start noticing.
Okay.
So, we did the original calendar, but high schools didn't have their calendars done, so we didn't know exactly when those breaks would be.
Okay, so we'll be gone on the February 4th meeting. And then we've received our financial profile rating score for the Illinois State Board of Education, so I don't know if, Mr. Rogers, did you want to share the great news?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we have 3.8 out of 4. So, we've had several years where we're getting fours, and we would have got that same thing this year, both our, the last point on their little scale is the percent of long-term debt margin remaining, and that's strictly because we borrowed our referendum funding, and now we're going to be borrowing more of the debt certificates, so that number's going to go down slightly, gets weighted to less, you know, the smallest amount in this profile score, so overall, we ranked pretty much a perfect score. So, it's just something where you commit ISPE that we get every year, so I'll have a little write-up in our newsletter, explaining a little bit more about what these points mean, things like that. Overall, it's very good news.
Great. That's all we have, we don't actually have any items for executive sessions yet.
I know, happy surprise. So, can I just get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Sullivan?
Yes.
Quan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lazzata?
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.